Going live in three, two, okay, that's it. We are live for the Westlake Charter School, October two thousand twenty-five. Uh, board meeting, uh, Board President Galick, you have the YouTubes.
Thank you, Dr. Ike. With that, for our viewers at home, please know you're able to still make public comments. Please email admin at westlakecharter.com with the subject line showing the item with which you want to comment. And please keep that to two hundred and fifty words. Every effort will be made to read in your comment during the meeting, but if not, they will be made part of the record for after. With that, Amy, will you please take the role?
Yes.
Hope.
Here.
Sean.
Here.
Josh.
Here.
Sat Beer. Sally.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
Suzanne.
Here.
Neroli.
Here.
And Katie.
Here.
Celebrations. Sally, you first.
Yep.
Oh, there we go.
I was buried in the science closet trying to organize. Extra time.
Is that your celebration?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Science nerd.
Yeah. That we have a science closet, I mean, that works for me. It is a celebration.
Um, gearing up for a field trip on Monday.
The Mideu trip.
I'm gonna celebrate the same things I celebrated in governance. There's, we had homecoming. And so two of my students, my, my boys went to homecoming and had a great time. And then tomorrow is the first middle school dance of the year, and I know our middle schoolers are really excited about that.
Uh, I will also use the same one that I used in governance, um, high school conferences this week. Um, and so it was just, you know, my, my last kiddo here, he's in tenth grade and he's been doing it since kindergarten. So it's old hat, but new information. So it's always good.
So good.
I'm gonna celebrate our traffic directors, one of whom is sitting right in the middle. I happened to roll in to pick up this afternoon and bless both of your hearts. There was, there was a lot going on.
There were a lot going on.
Car.
You don't say.
Made an attempt to go right around those stuff. Emma, yeah, it blessed your hearts.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy to do it.
Do you, are you taking additional long hair?
Yes.
Sandra.
I got a dark beard, honestly.
Oh, man, that would be awesome.
I actually always enjoy working drop off and pickup because you really like got eyes on people, but.
Good.
God, what did this was.
I'm sure it was. I don't ask to belittle the effort. Yeah. Steve?
Uh, I want to give a shout out to, uh, Dominica Stamos, uh, student teacher at the high school. She is, uh, currently spending, I think, two weeks, a little more than two weeks, uh, in a.
On Mars.
Poland, what's that?
Oh, on Mars, yeah, go ahead.
Mars, yeah, Mars, uh, in a, uh, Mars experience, uh, in Europe over Poland, uh, with other scientists. She's kind of locked away in this, uh, Mars experience. So she'll come back with some really cool stories and stuff to her with kids. So it's super awesome.
Like Big Brother on Mars.
She's in a biodome that simulates Mars and she's, uh, broadcasting. Are you logging in?
Yeah, so my class is jumping in on that. So we are partnered with scientists in Brazil. So there's seventeen habitats, I believe, around the world. Right now, in these same two weeks, and there's thirty-eight teachers around the world, and I'm one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Dominica is organizing all of this.
She's amazing.
And she's set up a website and they've got videos, like our astronaut videos, us every day. And we get to watch it. They're like, didn't they leave us a message today? And they're showing us around their habitat and their plants and we're doing plants the same that they are. And so we planted at the same time, and then we're gonna compare results because their seeds went to space and came back to earth. And our seeds have never been to space, and we're gonna compare growing conditions and then give our science data to the astronauts. And they're gonna use the data for space.
So sorry, further ahead, can't help myself. So you say like Mars, so is it like super dry, like, are they? So they're trying to simulate the environment, right?
There's a, there's a lunar landing, there's an international space station. There's Mars desert, there's Mars, um, insulated habitat. They're going out to explore a volcano on Mars.
You know, we helped to, uh, pay for this, uh, mission, maybe like we could ask when our Mars astronaut, our Mars astronaut returns. Maybe I could have her present or something to the board.
As a, as a person who always wanted to go to space camp.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, I bet, Dominica, I'm sure she'd do it. She's, uh, yeah, she's got such a great voice for, you know, science learning. So, yeah, I, I'll ask her.
Cool. I'm gonna do a personal celebration. I am gonna celebrate, I am now changing. I've been working part-time, but I'm changing into a full-time role with the state. And I'm excited about changing my lifestyle, which has been a little different for the past eight years, I think, um, since I've had children. So I'm gonna celebrate just a change in my life and my family's life for that, so.
Love it. Congratulations. Great.
Um, I'm gonna celebrate my youngest daughter, Sophie, who's here, and was like this year. It was her birthday yesterday. So she turned twelve and she got to celebrate at school, at the birthday class, and had a great time. But we had a birthday party last weekend, and you know, when kids go to a new school, you're kind of wondering how are they putting everybody at the party except for one girl, or friend, or sibling.
Oh, that's great.
Really cool.
Awesome. Amber, tell me, I have this wrong, I hope I don't, but I wanted to celebrate walking school bus and tomorrow being the big joint effort. I loved it when I had a student here, we, like, all my first day, it's funny, all my first day of school pictures were over like by eight, because that's where we.
That's right. That's right.
And, um, I know tomorrow's a big day and it's set up so that middle schoolers can also participate and be to campus on time. And I just, getting kids out and thank goodness it's gonna be sunny, but having that part of the start, I think it's just a great way to kick off the day. So, um, celebrations to jive and for everyone else that volunteers to make it happen.
Love that partnership. Uh, I'll celebrate, and it's not in my slides today, I don't think. Um, we did our first ever, uh, October break intercession. Uh, we utilized the new legislation regarding attendance recovery, and we coupled it with like our, uh, efforts toward math and English language arts and reading interventions. And we hosted multiple, um, October intercessions. So imagine summer school, but in the fall, we'll call it fall school. Um, so this is kind of cool. We, we hosted at the high school, one kind of iterative version of it, which is more, mm, credit recovery focused. And then a, a version of it down at the K eight, where it's focused much more on, uh, a skill recovery. And the teachers who, uh, signed up to do that did a phenomenal job, and we saw lots of good data that said, hey, this student took the pre-test here, the post-test there. And we saw a little growth, and we're like, hey, that's a model that works. And because of the attendance recovery legislation, we think it potentially, you know, kind of pays for itself. You pay the teacher to be in the room to teach, but you also recapture some attendance on the students who attended. So, super cool. Uh, do you wanna, you wanna play along, can you guys?
Um, I think that I was sending my kiddo off to college, uh, before, and now she's at college. I think she's been her fourth week now, and she, or maybe, I don't even know. Anyway, this week is, uh, midterms, and she was so excited to do her, like, who's excited for midterms? Oh, my kid's excited. Um, excited to do her first one, and then learned that she could do this other thing with like a certain resource and that she would, and then she did that, then found out she got, uh, extra credits for it. Like, I don't think that it was, I don't think she knew the extra credit was there until after, and so that was like a, a blessing. And then she had two more to say that she was a little bit nervous for, so I can't wait to call her on the way home and be like, how'd they go? But she's, she's just, I mean, she's crushing it, so.
A W, you wanna bring us home?
Yeah, now it's a lot of pressure now.
Yeah, we're all looking at you.
Um, I will celebrate being able to spend some time with my youngest daughter in Portland this last weekend. I've, I've never, I've been through Portland, but I haven't actually been there, and my daughter is an interesting traveler. She likes to really immerse herself in the world that she's in in that moment, and so we did a lot of walking in the rain in Portland. And had just had a wonderful time and got to see our favorite podcast taped live and just had a great time. So it was a good weekend.
Love it.
Perfect. Um, are there any board comments for items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Uh, we'll go to public comments while we check the email. Can we also check in with Ms. Mendez to see if there's anyone at the high school wishing to comment?
There's no one at the high school wanting to make a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez, appreciate you. And Ms. Giggis, is there anybody making a comment in the admin email?
No, there's not.
And seeing none?
Perfect. So I unfortunately have to leave tonight at seven, so, um, I'm gonna use my presidential powers, which I never do, to go ahead and jump to the consent agenda real fast so we can get that reviewed, discussed if necessary, and voted on. And then we'll go back to reports if that's, everyone's not in, okay? So, okay, so, um, we'll go to the consent agenda. We have four matters on tonight. Are there any questions? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Neroli.
Hope.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Neroli.
Yes.
Katie.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So we'll go back to reports. Do we have a report from Wave?
Uh, I think we do. I'm kind of working on it right now. Yeah, yeah, I got it. It's a link. I just didn't realize it was there. I'm gonna grab it real quick. Give it a little chika-chika and a little whoop-whoop up there, and then slide over here, do a little that, do a little page, let's go. Let's see if it goes, uh.
It doesn't work unless you make this sound.
You know, it's.
Yeah, it's all that sound.
Oh, you sound great. He's saying, John Ike is so easy to work with. I enjoy our time together. Hmm, that's awkward. We heard Mrs. Mendez. We did a YouTube test before. We didn't test this. Uh, I got audio, chika-chika. Let's make sure that's not muted. Nope, I got. Uh, it's, yeah, it's unmuted. Yeah, maybe it was muted. Olympic triathlon. You are amazing. All right, we go, uh, Felix, let me check, make sure I'm streaming through YouTube still. Yep, and there we go. Hi, everyone. I wanted to take a few minutes to share some updates with you on what's been going on in Wave, starting with a big win from our Olympic triathlon fundraiser, as well as an update on our upcoming Fall Festival, as well as sharing the priorities for the rest of the year. So with Olympic triathlon first, just a huge thank you to all the families and staff and admin for making this year's Olympic triathlon one of our most successful ones yet. We had three hundred and fifty-two students participate, up from, uh, two hundred and ninety-two last year and then two hundred and thirty-six the year before. So it's just been incredible growth and engagement from our community. Uh, together, we've raised around forty-nine thousand dollars, surpassing our forty-five thousand dollar goal. Um, another exciting milestone is that we, two hundred and fifteen students raised a hundred dollars or more. This helped them earn prizes and raffle entries. But really beyond the numbers, what really stood out was the energy, the teamwork, and just how our families showed up to support our school. It truly captured, I think, the spirit of Westlake. Uh, moving on to Fall Festival, uh, our eyes now are on our next big event, happening on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from three to six P M. at the K eight campus. Uh, we're planning over seven hundred attendees this year, which is amazing, uh, because last year's festival went really well. But, uh, we had nearly double the turnout we expected for. So this year, we're more confident knowing that we're planning for who is going to attend and how we can make sure that it's a smooth event. Uh, I want to give a special shout out to Sandra Crowell and Whitney Browning. They're leading the planning and logistics for the, for this event. Uh, they've made some great improvements in our logistics layout and just volunteer coordination to make sure it's been smooth and everyone has a really fun experience at the event. Uh, that said, we still need more volunteers for Games and Food Alley, so if you can help promote that to your networks, it'd be greatly appreciated. Families can sign up easily at westlakewave.com. Um, lastly, we're just talking about Wave's priorities for the rest of the year. As we look ahead, uh, we're focused on four main priorities for the rest of the school year. One is increased classroom engagement. Uh, two was eliminate mission drift in Wave activities. Uh, three was fulfill our forty-three thousand dollar commitment to Westlake, and then lastly is continue making volunteering easy and inclusive. Uh, we've made some strong progress on all of these. Uh, regards to classroom engagement, we were heavily involved in the training and setting up for, uh, parents and, and family members to be involved in the classrooms. We did that, uh, Everest Academy training with Dr. Ike and, and the, and the teachers. This seems to be going off in good, good progress. I think we're looking at fifty folks, um, signed up by the end of the school year. I think we're close to that number around twenty-five. I think Dr. Ike can be able to speak to that. Our summer planning calendar really helped us reduce overlap and mission drift. Uh, we're continuing to refine our fundraising strategies to meet the forty-three thousand dollar commitment, uh, which will be dispersed in March, I think, of twenty-twenty-six. Uh, and we're already fundraising for the next school year, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, lastly, we've just been listening closely to parent feedback. We've made volunteering simpler through our streamlined online signup events and just try to improve communication through our email and social media. The goal for us really is to make sure that everyone feels welcome and empowered to contribute to Westlake. Uh, so thanks for the time. I know I had a few minutes here. Appreciate y'all, uh, letting me speak my piece. Uh, thank you again for your continued partnership and support. I think together we're really making some, some strides here at Westlake, uh, for, for, um, keeping the school feel supported and being able to help our parents and students, uh, achieve, uh, you know, their potential and what we can do. So if you have any ideas or feedback, feel, feel free to reach out to me directly at wave, wcs@gmail.com. I want to thank y'all. Peace. Yeah, love it. Okay. Thank you, uh, Felix Flores. Close that, whoop, go a little whoop-whoop.
So Charter Impact met last month. We're very close on a white paper that includes essentially a dashboard, um, about a charter renewal and the track that we'll be on. Um, at this point, it's almost, it's kind of a waiting game, which I'm sure is in your report, and the fact that data hasn't really come out till November. So we can't say where we're at, uh, for last year, but we'll get there. Um, we're hoping to have that to the board in, when do we plan? Cause our meeting is next week, but the number is home.
Yeah, well, so we, uh, but we have an academic report today that kind of alludes to like, hey, the dashboard's coming next month.
Yeah.
And it actually releases on the day of our board meeting.
Yes.
But we'll have data in advance because we have a preview data from Advent's side. So we'll be able to pre, prepare our dashboard presentation at next month's board meeting. So tonight you'll get like, uh, a traditional academic report. In November, you'll get the dashboard report, uh, and then next year, uh, allegedly, we're gonna get both reports in October. For the first time, the state's been working the dashboard toward October. So next year in October, we should do full academic and dashboard together.
Um, but when do we plan on bringing the white paper?
Oh, we're hoping to bring it out next month.
Next month, right. So the goal is to, even though we don't have that data, we have enough in a structure that allows us to then insert that information and put you all on really good footing, um, for the next meeting when that information's out. So we're hoping to bring it all as part of one package.
Yeah.
Um, development did not meet.
We meet on Monday, um, start working on, we had, just start on our annual goals and start projecting our way out from there.
Let's go.
Perfect. Uh, finance.
Uh, so we did meet, um, and we reviewed, what, four policies, um, and made changes to one, which we brought to governance, um, just before this meeting. Um, and then we got a, um, update on compensation and just general finance information from Steve, as usual.
Super duper.
Okay. And then governance just met tonight. Uh, we, uh, oh, he wasn't on here.
Governance is there, yeah.
No, no, um, I thought we were bringing the.
No, we didn't, we didn't bring the finance.
Yeah, I thought, I just, brain moment, sorry. We have, we recommended for the board to adopt a policy, um, that will be on next month's agenda. And we, uh, had a really deep discussion about our Title Nine policy and potential changes that need to be made there, as well as, um, potential changes to our tuberculosis policy, which is a hard word to say, but we are working on it. That's that. Dr. Ike, to you.
Yay. Now are you, I know you're leaving early. Uh, I think I got nine, I got nine minutes to entertain you, and then we're out. So.
I'll just slip out quietly, hopefully. I'll probably fall flat on my face.
Right.
Am I me?
Now you say quietly, you'll, you'll trip over something.
And then the gate will be locked, so then I'll have to come back in.
That'd be perfect. That'd be perfect. So I'm sure you looked at the agenda and thought, oh, great, there's like nothing on discussion. We'll probably be out of here by six fifty-one, which is now, and you'll be off by multiple hours, I'm sure. Because whenever you have a short agenda, it's a long meeting. So, uh, I do have a, a, a executive director's report today. And inside, you know, how we do celebrations, strategic actions and updates. The update tonight is the academic report. I actually kept a little more condensed version of it tonight because, uh, I proposed that next month through November to do some combined data reporting, which I think will be very interesting in regards to charter renewal, but there's still plenty of slides there. And then I've done a, uh, an update on the strategic planning process where we are as of today, and I think that'll take a minute. So I don't know how long this is gonna go, but I know Amber Houston really wants to know how long my presentation is before I start. I have no idea.
Don't worry. It's not like you gotta keep.
Oh, my gracious. Uh, yes. Don't forget to sneak out with, with hope. If I look up and you're all gone, I'll still be on YouTube. Uh, thank you. Uh, listeners, our celebrations, look, uh, if you, uh, eh, 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 if, if you were at the celebration, if you're at the slide, say so, and I'll let you have the slide. Uh, because I might have missed some of these while I was, mm, icing my knee, which as we all now know, I've, I'm going to have knee surgery. Uh, so, anybody make it Grandparents' Day? Second grade is a phenomenal job. It is so much fun, and there was a ton. These pictures don't do it credit. There was a ton of grandparents here for Grandparents' Day. It was certainly lively. Of course, our spirit days are always well, uh, well done, not only by the students, but by the staff. I love it when the staff do the spirit day, and so sports day is kind of a home run, uh, for us every, every single time. Uh, A W, were you at this one? No? Have you, you've been the egg. You've been the egg dropper before, though. Is that Miss Alexander?
Miss Alexander, Miss Alexander did it, yes.
Yeah. Eighth grade egg drops. Everybody remember doing that when you were in, uh, at school at some point? You didn't do it? Yeah, great, great little thing where you try to protect this egg from breaking. So if you're a scientist, you think, what kind of materials can I use to protect this egg? And then the egg is dropped off the top of the roof, and the whole middle school, the whole eighth grade sits there and goes, oh! And then they open it up and go, ah, our egg made it! It's super, eh, you talk about like joyful learning and memorable moments and like hands-on, uh, experiential learning, you know, immediately we all see whose idea worked and whose idea failed. And it's just such a rich learning opportunity that kids love it, and A W used to do it. Oh, my gosh. Could somebody speak to this, please? Nope, now I guess none of us were there. But did anybody's children enjoy homecoming this year? Yes. Who's this? Who's this young man right here? Who's this? Who is that fella right there? Is that Jackie Higas? And he started here in what grade? Kindergarten. What grade is he in now?
He's senior. He's homecoming king.
Oh, oh, my gosh. Hold it together, man. This guy started off here in kindergarten. He's a homecoming, what is that, prince king, king? He's the king. All right, love it.
I tried to make that his, uh, senior night, um, head-on stick thing, what do you call it? I don't know. Well, they, they sent it in its blurry, so I'll get it, but then hopefully it'll come in time, it's on Tuesday, but.
Yeah. Well, homecoming fabulous job, uh, Adele Grimaldi, who's our activities director at the high school, obviously, big shout out to her. Our homecoming dance, our charter flag football charter bowl, uh, and the whole spirit week, I mean, absolutely well done. She is, she is the best. Uh, fourth grade detective understanding, we do this every year. I think it's absolutely the most marvelous thing, uh, that we do, and I, and I love it every time. I think exposing our students the idea that there are visible and invisible disabilities, and they both manifest in people around us all the time, and that we should accept that, that these are part of people's lives and that we, uh, uh, by going through this experience, start to develop empathy. That's just such a rich thing that we do. It's totally not part of the K twelve mandatory curriculum. It's what Westlake does to say, hey, this is what we think part of an educational process looks like. I just love that so much. Um, yeah, we are such science nerds, man. The astronomy filter, this is Stamos, right? Uh, is Mrs. Stamos's, uh, class going to the astronomy? Everybody know where that planetarium, have you all been to that planetarium? It's at Sac State's campus. They built it in twenty-twenty, maybe? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, awesome, awesome planetarium at Sac State. Our kids get a chance to go, and as we alluded to earlier, Mrs. Stamos is on Mars now. Uh. Is she on the moon?
She's lunar.
I thought she was.
My scientists are in Brazil on Mars.
Oh, I thought she was. She is on the moon. Yeah, that's right. She does a big Mars project in her class where the kids build Mars habitats. And I was getting across, Paul, and I said, you're right, she's on the moon. Uh, and I think that she designed a Westlake lunar patch. And I was like, hey, I'm gonna have to get one of those patches, man, a mission patch. Uh, the Eighteenth Annual Olympic Triathlon, which you heard Felix Flores speak to, was a good times had by all, fundraising, celebrations, lots of, uh, involvement, and super cool, um, kind of iteration at the high school. I think the high school's evolving its, what does Olympic triathlon look like at the high school? Versus at the, uh, at the K eight. So really cool, really cool stuff. Uh, and then lifelong ago, I almost put this picture on the, um, on my slide deck at the staff yesterday, cause I just, you know, Haley's brand new in first grade. I think she's great. She's a former, uh, instructional aide. Now she's a teacher. She's killing it in first grade, and I love the lifelong ago picture. Um, everybody remember? Did you have a kid go through lifelong ago? Yeah, I mean, one of my first Westlakey memories, when I came to Westlake, I was like, what, what, what's going on? And, yeah, we, we've been doing it for years. I love it. Uh. Does anybody know what this is? What is it?
They went to Sac State as their, you know, every grade at the high school goes to a different.
Yeah, right, right.
They went to Sac State, and I heard great things about the food and some other things, but they were very focused on the food.
Well, if you, if, later on, we'll talk family, student, staff surveys, and the number one, uh, word-clouted item in the student surveys on the K five side is chicken nuggets. So just, so I, we asked, hey, how's school? Do you feel safe at school? Uh, do you feel supported? And then you look at the qualitative data and it's like, chicken nuggets! So it's good to know that the fifth graders and the twelfth graders both are really focused on the food. Uh, okay, great. Yeah, that's the twelfth grade field lesson. It says it right there. I love that. I love that. Uh, I love that we go to a different, uh, like different campus each year for those, uh, for those four years. Uh, and then eighth grade explorer Liam Patel takes first in the middle school age group at the wildfire, uh, invitation. So, so we have a fantastic cross-country team at the high school. We have, I think, over forty runners, four to zero. I think our Westlake Charter High School cross-country team is larger than the Inducom High School cross-country team. And I only bring that up because we're a five-hundred-seat high school, and they are at times a three-thousand-seat high school, and we have more runners. And I just think that's really awesome to see so many of our kids get involved. But, but this young man is not a high schooler. And so he's been working out with the high school team as an eighth grader, and there's one invitation where, uh, middle schoolers are allowed to participate. And, uh, he took, uh, he took first there. This is fantastic, fantastic. And of course, uh, some of you were at Westlake Charter High School Conference Week this week. Uh, and we love Conference Week at the high school and the K eight. Um, fantastic. Let's, uh, let's, let's dive in. My strategic actions there, I got some deferred maintenance conversations, uh, quick governance update that I'll walk you through. And then I'm gonna dive into strategic planning, just family survey results and just preliminary results tonight, but I couldn't help myself. You know, I'm just gonna bring you a little data each month. Feel okay? So, uh, deferred maintenance, you know, as you know, we pay one percent of our, uh, total budget, uh, back to the district to ensure that while we, uh, well, well, so we have oversight and two percent of our overall budget, uh, for having these facilities. And then we pay a separate fee for the lease on the East Commerce Plant, but part of that two percent that we pay is for deferred maintenance to make sure that this campus is upkept. Uh, and so, uh, we have this facility use agreement that says every year we'll sit down with the district and go, here's our list. We're hoping to get updated, cause some things require deferred maintenance. We got the blue doors painted last year, yada, yada. Melissa Grunholz, Melissa N G Grunholz, uh, uh, meets with the N S T team regularly. Every six weeks she is walking around this campus going, I think that thing's crooked right there, and I, I gotta, I gotta work ticket in for that thing. I mean, she is, Melissa Grunholz is the best. And she's been, uh, uh, working with the team. We're super grateful for the, for the team. Cause like, because of Melissa and because of the partnership, we've been working on this little project here, the, the signs. When we bought, when we bought, when we built this place in seventeen, we got these great little signs, says your door, uh, your classroom sign. But like, this is how the signs looked, and we're like, and we've been asking for them to get replaced, and now they look like this. And these signs right here, do, what color is the fire sprinkler sign supposed to be, everybody? It's red, right? Now it is, but it wasn't. It's so funny. So it, if you're, you know, a nerd like me, you walk around and go, I see you. I see that sign replacement. So, look, we got the blue doors painted, we got the signs refreshed. Like, this is the type of upkeep that keeps a place looking and feeling like a place you wanna work, a place you wanna send your kid. Um, we've also had the playground refreshed. All of the ropes are brand new. All of the weldings are secured, you know, uh, it, it makes a big difference, right? We've had yellow tape on the playground for far too long. And so, uh, you know, this is what the gym and the cafeteria, blue walls kind of look like, you know, cause they get beat up after seven years, and now they're not. Like, walk out there on your way out, it's, might be some chicken nuggets out there, but like, I mean, the wall, it look, you walk through, you go, oh, this looks so good. So, yeah, we love a little deferred maintenance. If you just keep doing that every year, if you do blue doors this year and signs next year and the following year, let's hope we get, you know, some repairs on some, uh, cameras, you know, you keep that work up. So a big shout out to Melissa Grunholz and her whole team. Uh, Steve Corvick's part of that, too. Speaking of Steve Corvick, uh, at our governance, uh, at, at our board workshop, at our board workshop, we had some conversations around like, hey, what do you know about boarding? What would you like to know about boarding? How would you like to board better? Uh, we had some conversations that looked a lot like this. I bring up this book right here, which is written by a friend of ours, Marcy Cornell-Fyss. After our board workshop, uh, he just, thank goodness, took all of our little post-it notes, wrote little spreadsheets and said, okay, these are the things our board members said that were interested in like growing. So, uh, I reached out to, uh, oh, this is the wrong section, sorry. I knew they said governance work. I'll come back to that. Uh, uh, after our board workshop, uh, 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 I reached out to, and a meeting with Marcy Cornell-Fyss, who wrote that book right there, uh, because she's worked with over five hundred charter boards across the nation. She is a legitimate expert in the area of, uh, local governance for charter schools. She's written several books, and she was the owner-operator of Board on Track, which is nationally recognized, um, institution that coaches boards to locally manage, uh, charter schools. Uh, she has since sold Board on Track and then had a non-complete, uh, uh, clause for two years. And now she's, you know, off in the market doing different things. Good friend of mine, super smart person, uh, reached out to her and was like, hey, man, what do you, you wanna talk? What do you, you wanna talk and help me figure out like how the board posted notes could become future opportunities for professional development? So I'm hoping to get Marcy out here in the room at some point, but at the very least, she's kinda working with me to say, hey, how can we as a board? You know, iron sharpens iron. How do we, how do we grow and become a more impactful, more confident board? Based on the feedback that we got from the post-it notes and the survey that you took for the board workshop. So, super exciting. Hope you guys are into the idea, uh, a little bit of professional growth. I mean, our staff are engaged in professional growth, you know, four hours a month, every other Wednesday. And so I think as a board, it's time for us to reengage in like, hey, what's the best practice in the uh, in the area of boarding? Uh, I also wanted to recognize that we are doing some governance work. The governance team tonight had a really good conversation uh around how do we see the mandates for Title Nine versus what we wanna do with Title Nine? How do we see recent legislation and how it impacts our local policy and what's the difference between policy? And uh, and you know, memo or administrative regulation practice. And we'll be doing that all season. I think by January first, we think we'll be caught up with with policy updates. Although, we, we might never because we're so interested, we might just keep peeling the onion. I think we brought on three new policies tonight. We're like, let's go grab those three and, and move forward. So. Uh, any questions on uh, on governance update? I'll, I'll bring it back as Marcy and I uh start to talk about. If you have any thoughts about things you'd like to work on professional development wise for this board, let me know. Uh, as I meet with, with Marcy. Uh, I'd like to see, hope, uh, I'd like to dive into strategic planning because this is what's happening this season right now. It's so exciting. Um, phase one data collection, as I kind of indicated earlier, is, is, is where we are right now. All the stakeholders, board, family, staff, students are all gonna get some form of survey. Uh, they wanna host focus groups. We're gonna do monthly updates here at the board. We're gonna do these optional one, one question drips in the Westlake Weekly. And so I'm gonna tell you where we are right now. Stakeholder surveys are complete. So, we surveyed, maybe foolishly, all the way down to kindergarten because we thought, well, if we get a charter renewal that's a high-track renewal, then that charter will stand for seven years. So it is possible that the strategic plan maybe also goes seven years. So if you're looking at a seven-year strategic plan and you surveyed fifth graders, well, they'll be twelfth graders. So if you survey kindergartners, they're gonna be in middle school and you went, well, let's just go for it. So we surveyed kindergartners in one particular manner. We surveyed uh, uh, three through, you know, kinder two, three through five, six, eight, and nine, twelve, surveyed everybody all the way up. We surveyed all of our families and we surveyed all of our staff. And so now all that survey data closed uh the day before October break. And then we were not supposed to look at it because we're on break. And we totally looked at it because there's nerds and we just nerded and I had a broken, you know, leg. So I was like, I'm just gonna sit on this couch and nerd out. Totally nerded out. Uh, and I wanted you guys to see something tonight. So tonight's presentation is really family surveys, because that's where we started. We didn't start with staff or students. Started family surveys. And these are very preliminary, mostly quantitative results. I tell you that and I even put an asterisk on the slides that says, well, what's preliminary mean? And we'll talk about it. This is just preliminary. It's not exhaustive, but I think it's interesting. So, let's walk through what happened. We asked our families to take a survey. We asked in several ways. We did backpack strips, right? We did front desk flyers, Westlake, you know, website banners in the Westlake Weekly, in the news list. We asked our families, uh, we did all calls, text messages, and these people showed up. We had an incredible response rate. One-third of all Westlake families completed the survey. A third, actually, is, is thirty-three percent, thirty-two point eight percent. So we call it thirty-three. Thirty-three percent of all families are accounted for inside of the survey results. And they're very representative by grade band, by primary language, immigration, ethnicity. So take a look at this data. Ninety-six families who speak other than English at home filled out the survey. Which means Westlake Charter School is seventy percent E O or English only. This survey is exactly seventy percent English only. This is representative of our families uh, as far as their primary language indicator. Next, with seventy-two percent of our families who took the survey uh indicate not white as their uh ethnic or racial identifier and twenty-eight percent identify as white. At Westlake, you only have fifteen percent of your school population is white. So it's a slightly uh, 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 overrepresentation of the data. But I gotta tell you, like, I'm pretty excited that that, that demonstrates the diversity of the campus. So I'm like, ooh. This is good because then if you have, you know, if you have uh uh directionality or correlation, you know it's representative. Uh, because you have a large enough sample size, thirty-three percent is a more than large enough sample size. And because we're so uh, uh, we look like the, the, the population is good. Here's the last piece, it's great. Look at that spread. Two hundred and fourteen K five, you know kindergarten families show up, right? You know, but a hundred, I mean, that's a quarter of we only have four hundred or five hundred high school students, so uh, a hundred at the high school, a hundred, a hundred at the sixteen. Um, this is the way this breaks down. Th- this represents thirty-three percent of families, but there's siblings at play here. So it really represents twenty-eight percent of all the students in the school, which is like over a quarter of students are represented. Oh my gosh, if you were, yeah, anything, really, anything over seven percent is like a, you're, 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 you're like, you're good. If you're doing, if you're doing a dissertation, like if you're doing a legitimate publishable research data project, you know, if you hit ten percent, you're like, we're good. This is great data. This is great data, right? You're a data nerd, you know. Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, I just think it's cool. I just think what it does is if you know, because this was our hardest population to represent. Because the staff got paid to sit in the staff meeting, right? So you know you're gonna get them and the kids were holding hostage to take the survey in advisory class. So you're like, these families had to show up for us to get good data. And they totally showed up. So, good job, everybody. Um, so. Chicken nuggets! What did we ask and what are we beginning to learn? And what does this picture have to do? This picture has nothing to do with anything. I just think it's the cutest picture. It has nothing to do with anything. Uh, so yeah, what are we asking and what are we learning? Um, so let me back into what we asked. I know you know the mission aligned constructs that we probably asked. We asked, do we demonstrate what is possible? And, and the way we coded that out, the way we broke down these buckets of, of questions, there are multiple questions that we associated with organizational health. And there are multiple questions that we associated with organizational impact. So, as you went through the survey as a family member, you were answering questions, you didn't know that these six questions bucketed here and these five questions bucketed here. Why do you do that? Because single question construct can sometimes lead you down a rabbit hole that you thought something was true, but it's not. But these are composite scores. So if you have five questions, you get really variable data and you can really uh, you know, validate that what you think is true is true. You with me? Okay, only a hundred more slides. Um, sorry. School and community collaborative for us broke down into communication piece and a collaboration piece, academic readiness stands alone. S E L, we broke it down because there's a, there's a do we S E L your child? And there is a, is your child developing healthy relationships slash, there's this thing called bullying, we know matters. Uh, so we, we broke bullying uh and relationships away from S E L because we, we, we had two different constructs we really wanted to test there. Uh, we have this thing called inspiring adults and those are outcomes. Are we producing joyful learning? And um, are we producing graduate profile outcomes? You go through the graduate profile and you're like, you know, perseverant, all these different things. Those are the ones you would think we would ask, because like that's our mission. Uh, these are the ones that are, that are cross-cutting experiences. So, in this area, there was ten questions. Four of them were here and five of them were here, but that means there's one extra question and it might come out over here. So these ones were cross-cutting. Does your family feel cared for? These are experiential. Does your family feel included? Does your family feel trust? Does your family value digital wellness? Because we constructed this whole like how we're doing digital wellness. We knew that's where we weren't killing it because we don't have an A I policy, we're struggling with the cell phone policy at the high school. So we constructed that to look for it. And then does your family value the investments like base, sports, enrichment, all these things? Super cool. This is what most of, this is just an example, but this is what most of the data trend is gonna show you. It's um, it's called a J curve. So what you typically want in a, you know, in its quantitative study is a bell curve. Where the middle is the average and you have the twin tails, right? But almost all of the data it, in this survey kinda goes up like this. So, that's good because it, it shows directionality. We've, for every question, I've done a one versus five frequency count. So rather than just doing averages or mean averages, the frequency count typically in the analysis like this tells you like I might have scored a three, I might have scored a four, I might have scored a, a, a two, but a five is a definitive answer. Like I'm, I'm going all the way. I strongly agree versus I strongly disagree. These are in a Likert scale manner. Five and one are like big decisions. I've made a decision. And what you'll see over and over again is real strong directionality towards strongly agree, which if for our cases is a really good report card. Uh, and the last piece is like, and you're gonna hear this over and over, but over all the constructs, families really strongly demonstrated uh trust, feeling cared for uh and value across and appreciation across all of them constructs. So, we're gonna dive into some of them. Out of all of these constructs here, what do you think was the highest value? And I, and I don't mean it, just so you know, it wasn't by like a, oh, that was close. There's this value at Westlake that we found. It's up there on the board right now. There's this value that we found that statistically, numerically, like, oh, that one stands statistically significantly meaningfully above the other ones. Which one do you think it was? Communications off the charts. It is. It is off the chart. It's not the one, but over and over, we killed it in communications. Yeah, yeah. Trivial learning, it should be. It's not, but it should be. It is. And I love that. I love that. Yeah, I won't keep uh quizzing you. People feel cared for. And look at these que, look at these questions. I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, these li- listen to these questions and you ask yourself, do these matter if you're a parent? These are family members. If you have a child of your own, you send your child to school, do you wanna know these things? I am proud to be a part of Westlake. I feel welcomed as a partner in my child's education. When I interact with Westlake staff, I am greeted warmly. I'm gonna pause, I'm gonna tell you in a moment. What's powerful about this construct is it scored incredibly high, but the statistical variability amongst subgroups was almost zero. Meaning if you, based on race, ethnicity, special education, ye- years of, uh, zero statistical variability, people, and, and I'm telling you like, these two right here are code for microaggressions. At some school in the planet, somebody goes and says, I don't feel welcomed. I don't feel greeted. And I don't feel like I'm a partner to be part of this school. Here, across all of our demographic constructs, a strong, strong uh results. Westlake teachers, this is a nationally utilized um uh instrument. Teachers want my child to succeed academically. Again, you'll see in national data, the variability in that typically are on race, ethnicity. I don't believe that those teachers want these kids to learn. And here at Westlake, in these uh seven questions here, thirty percent of all respondents gave fives on all of these questions. That is weird. That's weird data. My child feels safe at Westlake. I mean, what else do you need? Uh, adults at Westlake care about the wellbeing of students. My child feels like they belong. That's the stuff right there. That's where I want, yeah. Yeah, so I know I'm a little dramatic. I haven't met me. I, I, I get it. But I'm, I distingue that so much. Uh, so, uh, this is a mean scale score of a four point five four. That's an off-the-chart Likert scale score. Uh, it, that's a very, that's a very high score. Uh, and then the last piece of it, like I said, is uh, uh, there are almost no variability across demographic groups. Uh, Sally?
And when you do this, then the kids can learn.
I think so.
This is what I, I want, uh, this is what I coach in teachers and new teachers, and new team members. We talk about this all the time and then it's like, how do you teach that?
Yeah, well, this is, we talk, how do you teach that?
That's not standards based, it's humanity based.
There's, it's something that, it's something I think is part of our culture. I would say to our board, what is it that we do that produces this? I think there's a lot more than you might imagine. Uh, what you support, what you, uh, you know, what we pledge you for, uh, the, the, the strategic plan that we produce. Our, our charter says these types of things in it. It's nice to have this type of data from this diverse of a, of a constituent group. You know, thirty-three percent of our families responded and this is what they told us was the strongest indicator of why they're at this school. Super cool. There's a second construct that is uh the highest um performing uh, of the mission line constructs and it was organizational health and organizational impact. So I think this really does speak to the work of the board. Uh, this place in the qualitative data, which I won't speak a lot of the qualitative data today. But um, this place presents as very organized, very uh effective, uh, very easy to interact with. Communications make sense. Um, this place is run well, says the, the, the families. So this is like Westlake adapts effectively to challenges and changes. I'm confident in Westlake's long-term history. I feel confident about their ability to provide quality education and the facilities are well-kept and clean, right? Then the second contract about impact has a positive reputation. They are innovative and I see evidence that Westlake is making a meaningful difference in uh for students. Strong uh scale scores of uh four point three eight and four point four three. Uh, and, and you know, if you're not used to like statistical analysis like uh on Likert scales, like that doesn't look that much different than the other one. It really is. It, it really is. A tenth of a point is, is massive uh data shift. So, uh, these are really high scores and again, very consistent across demographic groups. Alright, uh, so, it's kinda fun to just look at uh initial data, kinda see what pops out. Uh, look at the statistical variability of it, see which demographic groups do some um cross-tab analysis. Kinda check it out. That's where we're at right now. We're, I mean, you know, today's Thursday, we actually got back to work on Monday. We have a lot of work to do. I would tell you, we, I don't think we should know anything until January. Like we should just stay in the data and keep analyzing it and holding focus groups. I'll talk more about that, but so these aren't all of the findings. These right, aren't even findings yet, but they're observations. So I broke it down into, and I'm, I'm working with Dr. Galloway, she's kind of my partner on this and we're having so much fun. We both got our doctorates together, so we're like super nerds. Um, and we're like, hey, let's just go with something really easy. What's going well? What will be better if? That's the construct we play with. These are the eight topics you're about to see in detail and I'll come back to this slide so we can, you know, jam on it if you guys want. Feel okay? Yeah, cool, cool, cool. I'll go through what's going wells. I already said it, that uh what is standing out is the families gave consistent positive feedback across all domains. I, I've worked at other schools, I have friends at other schools. Not every school gets J curve uh, one-tailed data with these frequency counts like this. Our average score was a four point three three across the whole thing. When you take all questions and our frequencies are an average of six point four ones per question and an average of one hundred and forty-seven point three five. I mean, that's a J curse scenario. Uh, it, it, I think it's worth calling out and it's really across all of our, all of our domains. Families feel cared for. So I told you that already. I won't beat that drum much louder, but like that, that jumped out at me. When you look at the high score and note, note that the demographics are like, hey, are you in elementary? Are you in middle? Are you in high school? Uh, you, you serve by special education, English language, this is race, ethnicity, R E, race, ethnicity, uh, primary language, gifted and talented. So I think that's a really important one for us to recognize. Um, families value the investments and we talk about, hey, do you value base? Do you value um after-school sports comes in just off the chart? And when you start to cross-tab that for high school, it's like, you know, really a big deal. But even a lot of like elementary families, you know, demonstrated value, high value for high school sports. Really, really cute. I mean, I think people are like, yes, someday I'll be there. Don't take that away, right? Um, you know, what stands out as working well is that it's a very well-run and impactful organization. There's these, across all of, you know, this trust, inclusivity, but organizational health, communication jumps way off the charts uh, in that one singular construct and then impact over and over again. When you ask families uh, why they chose Westlake, and I'll pull apart this qualitative data uh at a later date, but um, this, this word reputation comes up over and over and over and over again. And a reputation is a proxy for uh well-run in this construct. And so it's just like, people are like, hey, I think that place is doing its thing well. It ain't perfect, let's be honest. Like everyone's like, but you could do better. Like, let's have more sports. There's always more sports. Uh, so yeah, it's good stuff. Uh, so yeah, it's good stuff. And then, uh, you know, what would be better if? What are we seeing? There's some real uh call for clarity around digital wellness. You know, like, we put these questions in knowing that this is a growth area for us, so we're like, let's just justify it. And families are like, yeah, I think we need a little help teaching our kids how much screen time is, do you write amount of screen time? And, you know, so this is really great thing. Uh, Westlake has shared with my family best practices around digital wellness, screen time, and the mean scale score is three point eight nine. Some schools will be like, oh, cool, we got three point eight nine. That's pretty good. Cause it's on the, on the positive side of three. But for us, compared to all of the four point threes and the four point fours, that three nine stands out as a, oh, cool. We had a whole strategic plan goal around like, how do we do this thing in the twenty-first century? So that'll be fun. Um, what do you think this this is gonna talk about? I mean, it's not a picture of pizza. Change the color of the purple rectangle. Uh, families feel, uh, blue or not, families feel strongly. This is, this is fantasy. This is, this is fascinating. So families feel strongly about uh building a permanent high school. Let me show you a little uh behind the curtain on some cross-tab analysis. When you start to look at demographics, who's saying and what are they saying? So the highest scale score, the highest mean uh for permanent campus value was reported by households. We have both a middle schooler and an elementary schooler. So when we cross-tab it against high schoolers, high schoolers with middle schoolers, middle schoolers, middle schoolers with high schools, middle schoolers with elementaries, elementaries, elementaries with high, elementaries with middle, and like clearly you have urgency, right? And and uh longevity. Hey, I I got an eighth grader. I got a third grader. And I want this one to get it, but this one better get it. It is really, really interesting data. It wasn't surprising, but it was very like, this one by itself has the highest frequency of fives. There's two hundred and thirty-four fives when you said, building a permanent high school campus is an important factor in my decision to enroll my child at Westlake Charter High School in the future. Now, the reason you're like, well, if that's the highest, that's not cared for, is that right there is a single-question construct, not bucketed into any of the other buckets, cause we knew. You put that in any other bucket of data, you're gonna mess up the data, because this one is so impa- it, that's that's what we're working on, right? Is that our families want that. And in the qualitative, they think we have the money. It's, and then, why aren't you building a high school yet? You're like, you got a hundred million dollars? It's, it is interesting. When you read the words, you're like, I don't think you are watching the board meeting. You know, but we're working on it, but it's it's expensive. Uh, that was fun. And then, um, yeah, there's this really interesting mixed data, and I think it's partly around the question construct, but we have healthy, are we producing healthy relationships and managing bullying? There's actually three questions in there, and two of them don't have the word bullying, one of them has the word bullying, and the word bullying then just, you know, triggers some some data responses, which is awesome and appropriate, cause then it'll allow us to have good focus groups to go like, what do you think this means? Uh, but this is interesting, right? K-five families and families who report as speaking English only. Why is this relevant? Cause I'm a nerd. I think it's cool, but it may not be. But these two groups reported lower agreement on healthy relationships. So K-five families and English-only families reported like less uh belief that we were doing a great job with building healthy relationships and managing bullying. High school, things were doing a better job. Why does that matter? Well, to me, you know, I mean, actually, I used, it's, I, I, well, to me, I'm like, if we had a really low score at a high school, that would be scary. Because in the qualitative data, a lot of, why did you send your kid to Westlake? A lot of them sent him here because they, they want safety. They want a small high school. And if we had a low score on this at the high school, then you'd be like, oh, you're not doing a very good job at at the one thing we all kind of wanted. And K-five, I know there's some K-five moms and dads in the room, uh, but like, sometimes there's a higher reactivity in K-five. Now, not that it's not valid. We should go uh go look at it, but you know, that's where you get a lot of the bumping and elbowing into each other, and people going, you know, uh, my kid got elbowed at school. But it's interesting. Here's all, or four point one six, it's, it's a very strong score. It really is. But you go, okay, in K-five, we dropped down to four point oh eight, English-only at four point oh seven. And then here's your six, eight, nine, twelve, and language other than English, located, right? Which is interesting, cause that's your highest score. So families who speak a language other than English at home had a higher belief that uh there was less bullying uh and more relationship building at school. Would be awesome to find out in a focus group why that was. Love to get twelve people in a room and go, tell me what you, what do you, what did you mean by this? Here's the question. How'd you answer that and why? And that's what we'll do next. Super cool, right? I'm gonna put you to sleep. No, you're with me. Good, okay. Uh, okay, last, is this last one? So families report lower academic readiness than the other four majors survey constructs. So look, if you look at the five major survey constructs, uh academic readiness comes in the lowest. It's still higher than, you know, on a mean scale score than, you know, it's still over four, but it's our lowest ones. It's really interesting. So, um, families, however, who identify their student as receiving special education report notably stronger regarding academic competitiveness than families who do not. It's just really interesting, man, to have the data. And we we talked in here at one point, should we do the demographics or not do the demographics? It's at this early stage, it's interesting. It'll become more interesting as we dive into it, but to go, oh, what's going on here, man? Some families feel like they're getting tons of support, and they're making more academic progress than they expected. And some families are not making as much academic progress or as they expected, or they're comparing this um idea of academic competitiveness through some other instrument that will come out in focus groups. Cause when I look at the qualitative data, one of the, one of the, and you came up at the workshop, where we had the workshop, homework. Where it's not, must not be a very strong academic rigorous environment. They don't send home any homework. And you're like, oh, well, that's just a good communication issue then. You know, so, but we'll find out in focus groups. So what do we mean by that? Why do you think this one's lower or not? So that'd be a great thing for us to touch. I think the staff data is gonna be really informative here as well. Uh, so yeah, really fun stuff there. So looking back at these eight constructs of, well, it's working well, what could be better if? I mean, just, you know, I'm talking a lot. And I got a whole academic report ahead of me. What do you notice? What do you wonder? Yeah, you said, what you got, man?
Well, I think during our last meeting, the things that we all thought could be better if are are on there. So I feel very like
Hundred percent.
We knew, we expected the right thing.
Yeah. I, I think some of the things we wondered about, we now have lots of data about. And we have the open door. We had a hundred and twenty-seven families say that they would be willing to come to a focus group. They're getting an invitation tomorrow. Um, it would be great to go, uh, we thought this might be a thing. Could you tell us more? Why did you think it was a thing?
What do you think was bullying?
Yeah, we'll get this rich data.
The kind of some of those buzzwords that we don't know, people are seen at the same way.
Oh, can't wait. Yeah, I love that. Anybody else have a what do you notice or what do you wonder?
Um, I think it's interesting, the um going well consistently, feeling cared for, and then the uh mixed feelings about relationships and bullying, cause I kind of feel like those
Yeah, that is.
They're cared for.
Yeah.
Maybe, I don't know. I just, I think that would be interesting to unpack a little bit.
Yeah, because in there, it says, do you, do you, does your, does your child feel safe at school? Overwhelmingly, yes, we feel safe at school, but we, there's a little, there's a little something around bullying here. So yeah, we gotta tease that out. And again, asterisks, super preliminary data. And if we start to pull them out into single-question constructs, we'll be able to compare. Do you feel safe at school? Do you feel bullied at school? That will, those two questions by themselves might be an interesting juxtaposition. Um, and then there's some like, you know, there's an interesting regression opportunities too that says, if if your independent variable is, I feel safe at school, and we have a scale of five there, and then you take all these other variables and you say, oh, see if there's any correlation, you know? So it it'll be interesting opportunities to analyze single instruments, yeah, to see what that means. Why, why, how are these both true? I feel safe and I don't. Anything else, Sally? Oh. Go ahead, Sally. I'll go back.
I wonder how the staff and student data will correlate with this. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like, okay, I, to be totally honest, you guys allowed me to uh basically write a dissertation here, like, because we have way too much data, and we designed it in such a way that it stacks. You took the staff survey, so you know, these are basically the same questions for sixty percent of them. And so we're gonna have lots of stacking data. Uh, and then we asked the students, do you feel safe at school? Do you feel bullied? And it would be fascinating to find out through some analysis, who, who aligns and who doesn't align, and wh- and which groups fall out and which groups don't. And I think it'd be funny to find out that like, the kids feel safe and the parents don't at this. Right? It'd be, it'd be, it'd be funny. So, um, yeah, I'm I'm looking forward to that too. Uh, Nollie, you have something?
I did. I think um the conversation about what could be better if and the confidence regarding academic readiness, and we talked about homework. I think um I may have mentioned with you, but on having families really understand what we stand for as a school and who we are, that having no homework is something that came and did a tour, you know, so so making sure as part of our strategic plan, folks that are choo- like, it's a choice to come to our school.
Yeah.
And and obviously, it's part of a lot of people wanna come for all all those amazing things, but when you say things could be better, this is part of our mission.
True.
So really just having, making sure we are clearly communicating who and what we stand for, and making sure families are very much aware of that.
Well, it's really important that we go from where we are in the preliminary data into focus groups and go, why do you want homework? Oh, cause I just want my kids to be busy before dinner. I'm cooking dinner. Okay, well, that's different than academic. So we don't know what we don't know yet, and then we'll, 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 we'll start to develop what we know. And if at some point our school values aren't aligned with everybody, cause how could they be, then just being clear about our values. Hey, we value no homework for this very specific reason. We put it up on the billboard. We go, and we can point to it. Yeah. Yeah, I love that. Anybody else? It's kind of fun, right? Yeah, you got like months of this ahead of you. Wait till we get to qualitative. I have literally thousands of codes already. I spent like twenty-five hours coding the data. It's super nerdy. I'll show you. If anybody wants to like really nerd out, uh, you know, we're using some pretty heavy data tools to pull all this data. It's fun. It's fun. Um, there's more slides though. Uh, so, so next steps. We have a hundred and twenty-seven families who said they'd be willing to come to a focus group. Uh, the focus group reason is obvious, because you said you want homework in the thing, but we don't know why. So we'd love to have a homework table tonight. Um, and over in that table, we're gonna have a, what do you mean by bullying? And over there, it's gonna be like, uh, we're gonna try to unpack these constructs. Sorry.
Greg, can I interrupt you?
You may.
Um, you're thinking about the ice. One thing I wanted to ask from the previous slide, have we looked at kind of um English-speaking learners and non-English-speaking um families um as primary language? And really looked at maybe if there's higher concerns they have? Like, does one group have higher concerns from our five areas of focus versus others, or is that just too deep in the data?
Oh, no, that's too deep. I know, I think that's, I think it's, I mean, what you're talking about is is uh cro- you know, is there's one instrument is cross-tab analysis, and another instrument is, we're talking about regression data. So, you know, uh, does being a student who's an English learner have a relationship or a correlation with a value of another uh portion of the survey? So you take the survey and you go, do you feel safe? Are we organizational health? Are we academically ready? And then you use this independent variable that's like, I'm an English learner, and does that have an impact on how these other things shape out? And you'll see that in the quantitative data analysis once you get deeper into it. Um, yeah, it's there. It's 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 there. It's there. Al- also, in the qualitative data, uh, you can, you do some similar groupings when you find a a code or a node that's filled with, you know, fifteen different um, you know, narrative. I love homework. I hate homework. I love homework. And then you go, hey, show me this by demographic. You go, oh, this whole group loves homework, and this whole group, maybe. It's never that clean, but like, it could. So yeah, yeah. Yeah. Oh, you could go down the rabbit hole, man. I mean, I'm telling you. Uh, we I I also a full-time job, but I could do this, man. I could do this a lot. Yeah, good question though. And if you wanna nerd out, and if at some level, if at some level, as board members, you've got an itch, and you're like, hey, man, I really wanna know, does this question chica-chica with this thing? You let me know if you whoop-whoop, and I'll put it in the, I'll put it in the machine, and we'll spit out a little data. Yeah, if you got a burning like, I think I got a hunch that there's something here, let's scratch on it. That's why we're doing this. Uh, a hundred and twenty-seven families are being invited tomorrow to come out on November fourth, fifth. November fifth for our focus groups. These groups will help us uh understand our family's experience at Westlake Charter School. Uh, we will host them all in one night. It says October or November fourth on this slide. I'm so embarrassed. It's the fifth. It's Wednesday. So I got that wrong. Sorry. Um, we're doing it all in one night for families, cause that's, makes sense for us. Uh, we'll do a kind of a town hall-y thing in the cafeteria, and we'll break out either by rooms or just around the cafeteria, depending on how big we get. And I'll be using admin, uh, potentially, uh, potentially teachers to host the tables, cause we'll have protocols on how these tables run to make sure we get consistent data across all of them. But then for staff focus groups, they're gonna be not all in one night, but they're hosted uh over a period of time. Uh, you are invited as board members to attend uh our November fifth uh family night. Even if you don't have a child at our school, it's um, you know, I I won't invite you to the staff focus groups for obvious reasons, uh, but I would love to have you at the family focus groups, because those are family slash community. So if you'd like to come out, you are certainly welcome, and we'll put you on the invitation list. Uh, invitations go out, and then in the Westlake Weekly, this week, we're gonna invite everyone. Hey, if you missed the opportunity during the survey, sign up and jump in. Okay? Really, the goal is by January first of two thousand twenty-six to know something. We wanna have a clear understanding of the experiences of our students, our staff, and our families. Which means really, between now and then, I don't want to think that I know anything. I want the data to like tell its own story and reveal itself. So by the time we get to January, we have no preconceived notions. We we get to January, we go, no, I think I, I think this is true. I think families, staff, and students agree that this is something we can, cause we can do anything we want in the next seven years. Can't do everything we want, so what do we wanna do? Uh, and then um we will begin kind of creating in January that first rough draft. Okay? Questions, thoughts, or concerns, or feedback regarding one of a million presentations that are coming on this topic.
Do you plan on, oh. Do you plan on, um, as you draft the strategic plan, will you be coming to the board to kind of share what your preliminary thoughts are?
Oh, yeah, it is a very iterative process. Uh, in the prospectus that I produced in August, it said, it spells out in phase three. It's very iterative. Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, Josh?
Um, I mean, I'm curious to see what comes out of the focus group with with homework, but I almost wonder, cause there's nothing but free time on back-to-school night. Is there a way we can include that in the executive director presentation? You know, that, cause at back-to-school night, there's the video that kind of
Oh, so like, what, some of the strategic plan findings, uh, present them out?
You know, this is why we don't have homework. You know, you say, point to the billboard or
Yeah, yeah, I I like it. I mean, yeah, I love the idea that if we as a board determine that there's a a a construct that comes out of this process that's so important, that it needs to be in that here, here, or here, yeah. What's interesting about the process we're in, right, is that this is a multi-year process. We did WASP last year. We're doing this this year. Next year, we are writing our charter. And inside the charter goes those promises. They're called charter promises. And what we promise is what we do and what we don't do. So that's really the appropriate place for us to say, this is why we do or don't do homework. And then, yeah, at the, in the video, as you can say, in our charter, it says this, and we know that because we all did this. Make sense? Love it. Uh, okay. How many don't time? How long was that?
Seven forty-two minutes.
It feels like forty-two hours. I miss her so much. Um, all right, well, I'll try and go quick. The academic report, uh, well, I'll try to go quick. Um, cause that's my, that's my one update tonight is the academic report. I really think that this is the last time I'm gonna do the academic report this way, and I'll explain why. Um, you know, I've made fun of this state of California for its, you know, pendulum a- approach to accountability. I I'm starting to look at the dashboard in a way that we look at the dashboard, you know, uh, around, as a growth model, you know? Uh, how do you become green or blue on the dashboard? Partly by achievement, but partly by growth. And what we have done prior to the dashboard is we've always said, how many kids met proficiency or are advanced? And how does that compare to schools around us? And that's an important metric. But the reality is, as you look at the demographics, there's no two schools that look exactly alike. And demographics drive outcomes in a lot of schools. And you'll see by our achievement gap metric, that we bend the data uh regarding the achievement gap, which is something we should be proud of, and something we promised in the charter. But I think the dashboard is beginning in the next month is a better metric, because every child's growth is accounted for in the growth metric. Whereas on this report, only the children who met proficient or 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 exceed, uh, met standard or exceeded standard, only they count on this metric. On this metric and it, when you're trying to bend the data for students who need, who are, you know, historically marginalized. They're just not reported in this data. So I don't know, we can talk about it. You tell me what you want, uh, once you go through this month and next month. But we'll start the way we start. We're gonna talk about the uh, the CASP results, right? The California Assessment Student Progression and Performance. It's got a four scale, uh, four-tiered ranking from uh, standard not met, standard nearly met, standard met and standard exceeded. Uh, that is the great state of California in English, Language Arts and Mathematics. In two thousand twenty-three, we start back there. We'll work our way forward and recognizing that those percentages are, they're percentage of students in the state of California who. Got a three or a four, right? So. Forty-seven percent of the kids met or exceeded standard in English, English arts, thirty-five in in math in the state of California in two thousand twenty-three. They grow to a forty-seven, thirty-six in two thousand twenty-four. They grow to a forty-nine, thirty-seven in two thousand twenty-five. That's the data we're looking at, everybody. We're looking at two thousand twenty-five because this was CASP April this year. Okay, this is the state of California. If that's the state of California in two thousand twenty-five, they had gone up two points in ELA, one point in math. Compared to the year before, right? So they're a forty-nine, thirty-seven and they're a plus two, plus one. You're with me. What is that right there? That is the great state of Alaska or Sacramento County. That's right, Sacramento County. Now, right, this is what we see, like you go, the state outperforms the county, the county outperforms the. That's the district. That's the Natomas Unified School District, right? So you go, okay, uh, these guys are forty-nine, thirty-seven with a plus two, plus one. These guys are forty-six, thirty-five with a plus two, plus two. The district is a forty-one, four uh, thirty with a minus two uh, uh, plus one. We went down significantly in ELA. And we held in math. We coming up next, uh, the great state of Westlake Charter School. We went down four points in ELA. I think we all knew that because we all talked about the dashboard, potentially going yellow for the first time in English Language Arts. And so we're like, well, we're down four, we're flat there, which is also weird, because you're like, what do you mean we're flat? I thought we went from orange all the way past yellow to green on math. We did. But that metric's flat. So how'd that happen? How did it, how is it we're going green on math? What's not being reported right here? Growth, because the kids who didn't meet proficiency grew. They just didn't meet proficiency. They didn't increase that. So that's why I don't think this. Anyway, doesn't matter. Um, so, yes, the state outperforms the dish, the county, the county outperforms the district. And we per outperform all of them. Uh, but uh, you know, look how close this is getting here and here. But you also recognize our demographic over the last ten years, you shifted to look more like all of these and you'll and you'll see that uh, in just a moment. This is kind of exciting, uh, uh, new addition to what you're gonna talk about on the dashboard. Uh, next month is we're gonna get our first color on the dashboard for science nerds, Sally Hubbard. Uh, you know, we don't know what this means though, the forty-six uh, thir- forty-three. We have been told it is possible that that's gonna produce a green. On the dashboard, but we're like, I don't know, forty-three doesn't look green to me, but maybe it is. Uh, and the metric, which we'll learn about at our next opportunity, is super different. It's not a, it's not a distance from standard. And it's not a met or exceeded. It's a third standard based on science points. I love California. Look there, look there. Uh, so we'll get to it, but I just wanted you to know we do have that data back. We looked slightly down from the year before, but we just have nothing to compare to. We're not even, we're not even sure what this means yet and we're we're working on it. Um, okay, so let's dive into what we do, the way we've always done. I don't know that we'll continue doing. And I think you'll see why. We're gonna talk about these schools, Alpha, Beta, Gamma, Delta, Epsilon and Zeta. They're Greek schools. Are they Greeks? They're Greek? How do you know? Um, remember last year we added a couple of new schools because we added K-twelve. So we dropped some of our K-eight comparables and added K-twelves. They don't line up great and but we added them, so we can have some K-twelves. So let's take a look at it. Do you know which school is yours? Um, this is, what's SED standing for? Close, yeah, I always think so too. It's socioeconomically disadvantaged. And socioeconomically disadvantaged is based on income. What what's another factor that's part of SED or socioeconomically disadvantaged? Free reduced lunch, because that's income. What else is part of SED? Uh, parent education level, right? So if your parents didn't graduate from from high school, the city of California assumes. You're socioeconomically depressed or disadvantaged. Fascinating, right? Um, so, do you know which school is yours? Hold it if you do. One of those is us. Uh, SWD, Students With Disabilities. So that's your uh, that's your percentage of students who qualify for special education. That is your English learner or your EL population. Just like thumbs up, you a hundred percent know which school is yours. Thumbs sideways, you're not sure. Thumbs down, you're like, I would totally not bet a beer on uh, soda on this. Sorry, I said that. Okay, yeah, good. Okay, so we're like, uh, no, no, okay. Because by the time we get to enrollment, you'll see, like, I know how big our school is. Okay, uh, African-American students? Uh, how about Spanish students? Spanish, Latinx, non-white? Uh, anybody there? No. Uh, Asian students? Couple of schools start to fall off. You're like, that's not our school. Yep, so you start a process of elimination. Uh, white students. Now, I just told you about where our percentage of white students was in the last slide deck, so maybe you know. Does anybody know which school is yours now? Steve Corrigan, no, of course, yeah, you built the slides. Uh, good. Two or more races. We don't talk about this one a lot, but it's actually a really significant uh, uh, thing to talk about at some point. And then here comes enrollment. Zoning on where you think your school is. You know where your school is? Here's your enrollment. Did you, is anybody like brave enough to be like, oh my gosh, I was totally wrong? Or do you, or do you, or you know, actually, maybe you don't know. That's our school. You're doing all, we're getting great, great, great. Uh, just, just demographically, what 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 tricked you? What 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 made you wrong? Or what what made you think you were right? Okay, yeah, 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 socioeconomically disadvantaged. Yeah, that one, um, because we we typically use a a forty percent unduplicated rate. Uh, which um, unduplicated includes uh, socioeconomically disadvantaged, uh, fostered youth, um. Uh, English learner, uh, all combined into one. And but yeah, this one's SED.
Is that lower than in the past?
Yeah, we were up to, we were getting closer. We were getting closer. We were at thirty-seven at one point, at our highest point, I think, thirty-seven. Yeah, yeah. Well, 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 look, I mean, let's ta- let's talk about this. So when I got here in two thousand fourteen, there were only uh, eight percent African-American at this school. And the district was like, hey, you don't look much like the district. Um, we were uh, we were uh, really uh, closer to thirty percent white. Uh, in two thousand fourteen, uh, and another thirty percent Asian. You look at this school over here, they're forty-seven percent Asian, fourteen percent white. You know, and 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 these have, these these indicators have major impact on on testing data. They just, they just do. Uh, that's why we studied the achievement gap, because we know what that means, right? Uh, yeah, I think that's, it's interesting. We look a lot more like the district than we have. Yeah, yeah. We look at the two or more races there. Like, I mean, these are very close demographics right here to the district. And so when we go back uh, several slides and we say, hey, the state outperforms the county, the county outperforms the district and we outperform all of them. You go, okay, well, that's interesting. At least we're still competitive in the district. Any other notices or things that tricked you?
The demographics for me looking at Westlake and looking at NCS, um, I had to go back up. I was like, oh no, I know where we are.
Yeah. Here's a interesting uh, a piece of data here and I don't think Joe Wood, the executive director of NCS, would mind me saying it on YouTube. They they've adopted a new uh, the the new methodology for qualifying people for free and reduced lunch, which is a different form. Uh, than the traditional form that we use. Our form's a little more stringent and I think it's harder to qualify. And Joe said, hey, the district allows you to use this one if you use it. I wondered what would happen if we switched to that new form, if we would see, because they switched to the new form and spiked from like. The high twenties, they were below us, to the li- you know, the low forties now. You're like, oh, okay. So maybe that new qualification methodology could could change. Uh, Sally?
Has our EL percentage dropped because we reclassified a bunch of kids?
Yes, that's, that's a really interesting qualification. So there's a couple of things going on here. Uh, there are a couple of, many of these qualifiers or qualifiers you're born into. Like, you're like, hey, how you doing? Like, I qualify for, you know, a race ethnicity. Um, English learners started as English learners and then they reclassify. And they're no longer reclassified as English learner. Uh, they're classified as English only. Uh, students with disabilities. Can be only counted in that column or that row if they're identified through an IEP. So Westlake Charter School with a strong MTSS pyramid, it's very plausible. We have lots of students who are like, hey, uh, my child. Uh, is on autism spectrum and we go, they're doing really well academically. Our uh, um, MTSS pyramid will give them all the supports they need. There's no need to qualify for an IEP unless unless we're demonstrating a uh, a difference between. What is should be performing and are performing. That's when you need the IP. But we do such a good job of supporting. A lot of kids with disabilities don't qualify as students with disabilities here. Same thing, like, I think the data I showed you guys a month or two ago was that we exited thirteen kids last year. Uh, so you're like, so you look at this, this percentage and you look across, you know, these other schools and you go, but that, we have a very high. Uh, rate of exit and a and and a low rate of qualification uh, from a traditional sense. So I, I think this number's a little skewed. This number is potentially skewed based on the number of kids who qualify year after year. So yeah, or uh, requal- reclassify. That's interesting. It's interesting conversation. Um, so let's go from here then to to performance, right? So I told you about those percentages. Again, it's only listed to the kids who either met or exceeded. Here's the similar schools that we just talked about. Uh, we have a cohort average all the way across. I kinda wanna take these guys out, so I do, because I just go, I know we wanted more K-twelve examples, but they just don't line up in so many ways. But uh, if you go with these averages, we're slightly under the average and we're slightly uh, under the, or slightly above the average, slightly under the average. Okay, whatever. Uh, we're around the average. There are schools, you know, out there, I mean, these guys, these guys are killing it. But again, I, I, I think they have wonderful practices and I love that school. Uh, but I think they have a very different demographic as well, you know? Different culture, different demographics. Yeah, it is great. Um, again, mathematics, same deal, right? We're uh, uh, on the cohort average. We're slightly above the cohort average. Take out those two schools and you're slightly under the cohort average. Um, I don't know. I I don't know if comparing to a select set of schools. Because I, we're always outperforming these guys, but they have more poverty than we do. We always seem to underperform these guys. They have a far larger Asian and white population than we do. You go like, ah, these comparisons are strange. Maybe they're important, maybe they're not. Maybe that's part of our strategic plan conversation. When we look next month at the dashboard, here's what's important. What are we charged with doing? Taking the kids we have and growing them for, through academic readiness. So the dashboard allows us to say that every student who makes growth is accounted for on our growth metric. I don't know. I think as part of the strategic plan, we should start to articulate what we're trying to accomplish with this, this particular metric. This standardized test metric. Let's agree to a plan and let's stick to it. Jed Wallace, Jed used to always be like. Just find a benchmark and then say, did you meet it? Move on. Because the more important stuff is how we school, not how we test. So I'd like to get there. Sally?
When did you first come up with the rubber band analogy? He says that's not this, but the dashboard growth is.
Is, yeah, it really is. It really, well, especially the new growth metric inside the dashboard. So last year, I wouldn't remember, because it was one presentation of a thousand, but um. There's a new metric that shows how your school is doing to make growth. Uh, compared to other schools. It's an interesting metric and I think that might be a little at what we're getting at. Uh, but we'll play in the, in the, this presentation versus next month's presentation, then the strategic plan. Data, and then when we get to strategic planning, I'd like us to have a real sit-down conversation about what do you wanna know? Do you wanna know how you compare to schools that don't look like you? Do you wanna compare to, what do you wanna, what do we wanna do? So I would love to get there. I'm gonna go on to achievement gap analysis, but like thoughts, questions, concerns, things you want me to address regarding. This data. I mean, our English scores are down and our math scores aren't, you know. They're improving, but they're not where we want them to be. So your, your, your thoughts on that? Yeah, Josh?
Um, going back to SED, um, that caught my.
Yeah.
Um, and you talked about. I'm sorry?
Oh, we got you, we got you. You're good.
First day. Um, so I guess with with other schools using a different form. Which has brought their their numbers up to where what they think is more accurate. Is that also reflected in the ADA provided? By the state-proved student or is this totally different?
Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah, only if you, only if you uh, qualify for Title I funding, in that case, which we we wouldn't uh, qualify for Title I. Uh, unless you met fifty-five percent, fifty percent, fifty-five? Uh, yeah, if you if you bet, if you broke that threshold, it it would be important now. What's really interesting to our uh, partners at NUSD. Uh, whoop, there they are, is that, you know, the hundred and fifty-seven right now. Uh, when I was the principal of Natomas High School, I think we were eighty-one percent free and reduced lunch at Natomas High School uh, back then and um. You know, so you weren't any, anywhere near losing your Title I status. And so I look at the district sometimes and go, oh man, you know, if they dip below fifty-five. It would be interesting to see what would happen, you know? And I don't know their books. I don't know exactly what happened. It's it's, it's a significant uh, financial. Yeah, 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 it's a difference. Yeah, 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 yeah. Anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, our our charter uh, definitely definitively calls for us to continue to work to close the achievement gap. And we're in the most diverse zip code in the nation and part of our charge is like, how do we make sure that our students of color, our historically marginalized students and especially the black-white achievement gap? Is being addressed. So for those who are new to the show, because you haven't seen the show every year for seven years, I'll slow down. This is the state of California, broken down by demographic for two thousand twenty-four. And this would show you what the gap is in the state of California. African-Americans are thirty percent meeting and exceeding and whites. Were sixty percent, so it has a thirty-point achievement gap. Thumbs up if you're with me. Yep, simple dimple, right? So then you go, in that same year, Westlake Charter School, forty-one percent. Now, we can compare internally. Or you can compare externally. If these two groups of African-Americans are both benchmarked off the state. You get a consistent number that you can compare. And so what we do is say, well, we are forty-one versus sixty, which is a nineteen-point gap compared to the state. Because these kids all happen to live in this state. So you go, okay, that that's our benchmark, then what happened this next year? And we would look and say, actually, it turned out to be exactly the same gap. Right? Different numbers, same gap in English Language Arts, which is interesting because like. Our African-American students in a year where we decreased, our African-American students increased. So that is interesting. That is interesting. Uh, okay, so let's go and do the same thing for math, where there's a twenty-nine point gap last year. And twenty-seven point gap this year. So actually we shrunk the achievement gap slightly from last year to this year. And again, your African-American students were twenty-one percent last year, met and exceeded, they're twenty-four percent this year. So that's an interesting little nugget there, where we've gone from eight percent African-American in two thousand and fourteen to what are we? Thirteen percent African-American now. Uh, and we're seeing, you know, the achievement increases there. Uh, that may be an interesting piece for us to, you know, watch over time. Any thoughts on that? All right, I think I'll bring this thing into a, into a, into a, into port. Uh. I like to check the NWA scores, because I like to compare last fall to this fall, except this fall, they changed the norms, so it will mean nothing to you. But they do it every five years and every five years it's the same joke. And there it was. I'll see you in five years. So, uh. Uh, remember, NWA is a nationally norm reference test, not a criterion-based test. Uh, we use these scale scores to create percentiles, right? Are you in the ninety-ninth percentile? I'm in the first percentile or are you? Right at the fiftieth percentile, uh, when compared to other students your, your, your age. We suspect that students who score on NWA as a white paper, it says, you're scoring sixty-first percentile, you're likely to. Meet or exceed standard in the state of California, which is weird to me, because I always say this, but like, so if nationally norm reference means the fiftieth percentile is the average. You need to be eleven points above average to just meet the standards in California. That means the standards in other states are not the same as the standards in California. That means the standards in other states are not the same as the standards in California, which I think is interesting. Our kids are just smarter. Um, so we think that the fall scores are, are somewhat reliable to predict the casp outcomes. Uh, but, uh, NWA updated their, their scores in two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we've been using the twenty-twenty norms, which is based off pre-COVID, uh, scores. Uh, we believe these new ones are more accurate, but we can't compare fall to fall. I'm gonna show you right now and you're gonna think, oh, we went up. No, just kidding. The scores, the scales went down. This is actually kinda fascinating if you're a nerd. Um, here's the trends that NWA's noticed from their twenty-twenty norms to their twenty-twenty-five. What they're basically saying is they test hundreds of thousands of children and they're starting to notice some things. What do they notice from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five? Everybody got smarter? Hmm, let's see. So in general, the twenty, twenty-five norms reflect a downward shift in student achieving compared to twenty-twenty along with increased variability. What? A downward shift, but increased variability. Who didn't go down as much during COVID? Yeah, the COVID mess. The, the marginalized, the historically disenfranchised, those without access had less access. And those who hadn't access out, actually got it. It's fascinating. So soapbox. Um, as a general rule, the same RIT score or scale score now corresponds to a higher ranking. I was in third grade, I was in third grade three years ago and I scored a four fifteen. And that was in the fiftieth percentile. And now my little brother is in third grade and he scored a four fifteen. And he's in the fifty-fifth percentile. Are you with me? Like, cause it's a, it's a, it's a curve. So we're waiting on a curve and the curve is now changed. So, um, this little table is weird to read, but let's read it for fun and then we'll go home, I promise. Can you see what this says? It says, let's look at reading. Achievement, those who are in the bottom group declined double. So if you were a low achiever in the last norm set, what we're finding is over these five-year periods, things got way worse for you in reading and in math. If you were in the middle group, you went down, just not as much as the bottom group. So at Westlake, if you look at our data, we put a lot of intervention into bending the bottom group. And we put a lot of intervention into, and kind of kept them flat. They didn't do this, but like, they haven't gone up. But nationally, this is your norm. And un, not unfortunately, great for them, the top or highest achieving group were stable, no meaningful change. They could read, they can still read. And then there was some mixed da, data here. Cause math, well, mixed data just means it's, uh, there's a lot of variance, uh, in the top level. Some of the top level kids went up, some of the top level kids went flat, some of the top level kids went down or the high achievers. Um, but you also recognize, you know, cause we're, you're like, you've had a big change in math in the last decade. And so there's some math weirdness in there. Cool. And then similarly with growth. So I, you know, I don't know. I, I love this stuff, but let's go. These kids grew more, yep. These kids super grew, right? Right? And these kids actually, yeah, remained, remain the same, uh, um, in math. Yeah, good call.
Okay, that reflects what I feel in math instruction. For the kids who understand how numbers work and the flexibility with numbers, they can be flexible and really attain the high level thinking. Kids who are in the middle, if you get enough foundation and a combination of this higher level thinking, they'll go along with you. And the kids who are struggling and lack skills, they need more foundational.
There's, there's also a thing here though about pre-test, post-test. And it is that the test scores were super low and they, they remained super low. Cause their, see their achievement, like, right? So, yeah, so the, the growth variability here. But I agree, and I always wonder Sally, if these correlate with, with these. I wonder if your top readers in the new math are your top math mathematicians.
Not all the time.
Hmm, interesting. Yeah. Interesting. Yeah. Um, well, here's your, here's your aha. You're like, oh, last fall, we were a forty-five percent of our kids were in the sixty-first percentile or above. Do you remember how many kids made it in CASP in English Language Arts? My age next year. Right, twenty-nine. Um, yes, so, so we, we were a forty-five, we scored a fifty-five. In the new norms, it's a fifty. And so, oh, we'll get, it's closer, it's closer to CASP. We think it's gonna be more predictive. But when we first saw this, cause Jen Kaiwu and I build these reports together, we're like, nailed it! And then I, I literally said it, didn't they re-norm? And Jen was like, oh. So yeah, Jen Kaiwu is the smartest person I know and we just had this moment like, we're doing it, we're not doing it, it's just the norms. But we'll take some wins because we have a ton of great stuff going on right now, uh, in, in, in math instruction and math intervention. Uh, and again, here's your new norms, English Language Arts. And what was our English Language Arts, I'm, I'm sorry, what was our math output in CASP? It was forty, right? So we said thirty-four, we got a forty, but look at that forty versus forty-two. I mean, I think, I think the new norms might be closer, you know? So what are we doing in response to the data? And I swear we'll go home and it is, uh, let's look at all this stuff we're doing. I mean, K-eight reading interventions, uh, include our foundational skills, just words, Barton, uh, foundations. Uh, we have or, oral reading fluency. Our middle school has electives. We have three math intervention electives at the middle school right now. So instead of going to, to, you know, basket weaving or whatever on this, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to, there was a basket weaving class, I think it was. But yeah, it was, our elect, our, our electors, our electors are the best. Uh, anyway, uh, and actually I'm hearing a really good report out from these rooms that at first these kids were like, what are we doing in this class? I don't wanna be, I wanna be a basket weaver. And they've settled in and had, and shown some really good pre-test, post-test growth in those classes. So very excited about that. We do have one English learner, uh, elective course that's helping our English learners meet that uh, on that, uh, 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 LPAC test coming up. And then, uh, one just words or foundational reading skills class. So that is way more middle school intervention than we've had in years past. Uh, K-five math intervention includes, uh, uh, this new, uh, kickstart program that we're utilizing and we're, uh, we've, kids are screening and launched on that. Uh, I gotta tell you, we launched more intervention in August, September than, than we had done all the way up to November of last year. I mean, last year was around November, October, November, we kinda launched intervention. This year, they, they, you know, big shout out to Kaiyu, Chastain, that team just sort of like, let's go. We know who needs help, let's get them help right now. So that's cool. Uh, and obviously, uh, nine, twelve flex blocks are used, you know, intermediate sports students. Our PLC teams all the way across the K-eight have done protocols for CASP. How did your kids score in CASP? How are your kids scoring on NWA? How are your kids scoring on local assessments and a special protocol around English learners? Uh, and then obviously our Everest Academy professional development this season, all K-eight math teachers are taking a six-part series in math instruction that aligns to our math curriculum. Super powerful. And all non-math teachers are doing an instructional design, um, a professional learning that, uh, anchors off of Wiggins backwards, um, uh, planning, which is a kind of foundational instructional skill here that our teachers use. So lots of good work going on there. Predictions for the twenty-five dashboard. You know what the, what the little dials look like? From red to, uh-oh, to blue, to yay. Uh, let's see, we know that the dashboard colors are a factor of achievement versus growth. You put those two together, right? You score high, but don't grow, you're in the middle. You score medium, but grow a lot, you grow up high, right? So achievement and growth, we also are recognizing that this is a critical time for our charter renewal. That if we use the dashboard results from twenty-five and twenty-six together, we could qualify as a high-track charter school and get an automatic renewal for in two thousand twenty-seven. And this spring's testing, the one you're about to see here, will be our first qualifier. Cause we qualified for criteria two, we believe. Uh, and then the dashboard results over two years create that. So back in twenty-three, we were a green, green, red. Remember the LP went red and we're like, what's an LP? We didn't even know. Right? This is a brand new metric. And we're like, oh, we blew that. And then we started to come back on LP. We grew up to yellow last year. But math dipped all the way on the orange. We're like, oh my gosh. Green will never change on English Language Arts, right? Just kidding, it goes to yellow this year. So this is what we think is happening this year. We think English Language Arts dipped to yellow. It's right, it's, it's a, it's less than a point diff, we, we, we could be green, but I'm gonna predict yellow that way. I'm happily wrong. Uh, we jumped from orange up to green in math. And look at that LP track from red to orange to blue. Jessica Ashby, I'm sure you're watching on YouTube. I know you're not, uh, but you're amazing. Uh, yeah, Ashby and all the teachers, you know, really leaning in on the English learner progress. Really, I mean, this is an indicator of like, we're post-COVID, all, all these pre-COVID legislations came out. I think we just got caught up working the work and then we looked up, we're like, wait, what? There's a new metric? Elp, what, what, what's happening? And we just got caught looking. And then we started, Ashby pulled me into my office and was like, this is what we're doing. Yes, ma'am. And then look at where we are. So, uh, Reeseorn Ellis has played a huge part in that as well. So, uh, we think that this, um, qualifies us for criterion two, for high-track. And if we were to do this again this spring coming up, if we make five points of growth in math, five points of growth in English Language Arts, we'll go green, green. Uh, and if we can get, uh, fifty-five percent of our English learners to make one, um, step of progress on the LPAC, then that LP indicator will be, eh, in the right direction. And then we would qualify for criterion two, uh, high-track charter renewal. We would go into this summer, we would definitely go to the beach. And then we would write this charter and we would submit it and it would be an automatic renewal. It'd be awesome.
I already have misunderstood the numbers for you, but for ELA, didn't we go up two points or was it?
Yeah, English Language Arts, English Language Arts came down four points. Yeah. But what's interesting is we were flat in math. Well, how you, how, how you, how do you go from orange and only forty percent of your kids met it last year and only forty percent of your kids met it this year? How'd you go green? Anyone? Yeah, so remember, these colors are partly how you score. So let's say we scored a medium to, to, last year, we scored medium, but we had gone down by three points. Medium down is a yellow, but medium with kids making some growth goes over to green. So how do you get growth? Cause we don't measure for this, the percentage of students who met standard. For this metric, we take everyone's scores and we create a call, a thing called distance from standard. What's our group score? And I'll explain that next month. We'll come and do dashboard next month. Su, it's super fun. And if you wanna, uh, uh, independent tutor on it, I'll, I'll sit with you too. It's a, it's an interesting metric. I mean, you take everyone's scale score, you throw them in the pot, you end up with an average number. And that's the number that goes up here. So that means if a kid is way down here, four grade levels below standard, where that kid goes up five points, he scores your school five points and your school's growing five points. Whereas the old metric, that kid doesn't do anything for your school until he goes from not meeting standard, nearly being standard, still doesn't matter. Now he's meeting standard and now we, our, our percentage of kids meeting standard goes up. Well, this kid's got so much growth to do, he could go his whole life and, and not make it up there, not showing any growth. But if you can give him to grow five points, it comes out on here.
So you can have students who are at the medium, it's just not growing. So they're meeting these expectations from other.
Some can be, yeah. So some are meeting the full expectation. Some are below standard, but they're showing growth. And if they show growth, it's helping you go across this way. Yeah, yeah. Sally?
This feels so much healthier to me than, I'll never forget being in the room when my principal announced the no child left behind. A hundred percent of students must meet standard and meet proficiency and all of us just went, oh, gut punch. But this is like, every kid matters and can grow.
Do you remember, uh, what year that legislation was gonna sunset? It, all kids were gonna be at grade level standard by two thousand fourteen. Uh, and by two thousand ten, the administration that, that put that in a play had gone two cycles through administration. They'd, they'd been in administration for eight years and they left office. The next person that came in was like, you guys set me up. And so they sunsetted that and went from no child left behind to, um, to every student succeeding act. Uh, and set up another very, each administration sets up the first part of the curve, very administration friendly. And the out years are almost unattainable. And so the next, the next guy comes in and goes, I'm the new guy. Oh, we can't do this. I was just so, it's, I, you know, I will, we'll go home, let's go home. Uh, but yes, it's, it's, it's fascinating. I remember when NCLB came out. Um, if it doesn't make sense, it will next month. Uh, so this dashboard is unrelated to those previous comparison metrics that I was showing you. And next month, we'll really unpack the dashboard and what we're trying to accomplish. So that this takes into account every single student, every kid that goes up a point, you get that point on this dial. Whereas in the other metric, it's only kids who meet standard that matter. So for us, we spend a lot of time investing in kids' growth, it shows on this dial. Uh, okay, that was my academic report. Um, questions, thoughts, concerns, things that you'd like me to bring back or things that could be better uh, about that, uh, particular report? You're like, just send us on with hope. Forty-eight minutes ago. Okay, okay. Uh, let's see, uh, are you the vice president today right now?
I am.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna take it back to the agenda. If you wanna run reflections, you, you do you.
No, I'm the vice president, taking on the duty of the president.
Yeah. Uh, so Sean, I think, uh, one future agenda item is that we will have a dashboard report, uh, next time. And I think we might have a presentation from the impact team regarding a white paper, uh, uh, monitoring the, the, the dashboard. Um, and let's invite, uh, Mrs. Davis, yeah, to come present about her lunar project. Yeah. Any other future agenda items? Do you wanna run reflection?
Um, yeah, let's do.
It's, it works like this. What worked well about this meeting for you? It helped me learn, it helped me process, it helped me make a decision, it helped me understand. Uh, or what would've worked better if? So who would like to go first? What worked well? What would've worked better if?
I, um, I, I've been looking at these yearly reports, so a fourth year now this is. And every year I feel like I learn something more. And I think one of the best things is as part of the strategic plan, looking at these percentages and understanding this in a different light of where we wanna go. I mean, I mean, the more I thought about this through the, um, through the evening, looking at NWA when it first, I mean, that, um, dashboard and when it first came out and feeling so frustrated by trying to meet those colors, now looking at it, the fact that it includes everyone and, you know, what do we stand for? And where do we wanna focus? And the question you asked is, what is that number we wanna go to? Maybe it's not a number, maybe it's a color, you know? Um, just kinda got me thinking on that.
Yeah, I'm interested in that. Yeah. So it's time to go your way. Uh, hit your microphone and tell us what worked well or what would've worked better if.
Yeah, I appreciate you, um, sharing the way you've done data before and just that reflection on, is this the best way to look at it? Because I think we are a unique school and we, and we do things differently. So, uh, but I'm, I'm happy about the dashboard. It, it just reflecting on when I worked for CC, that was the year that they were really advocating for that growth metric to be put on the dashboard. And it, it really benefits all charter schools to, to be able to see that. It's just not the kids that are meeting. It's everybody moving forward, which is what we really wanna do for students. So, um, I, I appreciate just the reflection on. Do we wanna look at data this way? But maybe this is the better way to do it because that's what we're really aiming for.
Yeah, it's interesting. So now that you say that and I listen to Sally reminding me about NCLB, I mean, the way that we look at data, the old way is really, uh, NCLB related. All students will meet this standard by this time. And so we're, I was stuck in this my whole career to say, yeah. Uh, what worked well for me is, uh, attentive, uh, nodding listeners. I know I talked a lot tonight, but I really appreciate you guys being like, oh, yeah. Even if it's not interesting, I'm making, making, making them think it's interesting. And I love when we're doing the data, the survey data and you guys are like, oh, that's interesting. So I'm like, oh, cool. You know, so I love attentive audience. Uh, thank you for participation. Uh, are you guys playing?
Yeah, um, I like the, the survey data.
Yeah, yeah.
And I wanna see the students' responses.
Yeah, yeah. I promise we'll bring student response in. Shiggy Nuggets! Hoba? Oh, Kiki, you wanna play or no?
I'm good.
You're good? Yep.
Um, it works well for me that you and Meredith went and got your doctorates together so that you can teach us all these cool things.
I know. It's really funny because she's really a quant research person. I'm a qualitative and we're getting to use both. And we both know the other way too, but it's like super nerdy. But it's like, super nerdy. I mean, it's, it, you, I would love to write a, a, a research paper about this school. It's a fascinating place, and I think that there's some data in there that's quantitatively and qualitatively, like, demonstrates a very unusual affect. I think this place is strange.
Do it.
Yeah.
Um, I think what went well for me is just seeing like, the numbers, especially with like, our demographics. Um, I've been here for a while, and I've seen it change, but to like, actually see the numbers and compared to other schools, um, was really interesting.
Yeah, you know what's funny is I'm starting to say, well, I don't want to compare other schools' achievement outcome, because, but it's so interesting to contextualize, who are we compared to other people that we perceive we know something about? I think I know something about Nitoma Machineified, and then you go, we look a lot like Nitoma Machineified. Fascinating. Yeah, yeah. Houston?
Um, I love all the data.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot to look forward to, which is, I think, my highlight, is I'm looking forward to seeing the dashboard, because I think that all looks relatively positive. And then the survey data, just to, as you just, you know, learn more and more and more, we get more information, just gathering all that, and then coming up with a plan that will serve us well for the next, hopefully, seven years.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm, I'm, you know, obviously, I'm nerding up, but I'm very excited about strategic planning. I can't wait till we start to go, what do you want to, what do you want to do? What is our, what do we stand for? I love that. Even the conversation of governance today, just about policy, maybe, yeah.
Is like who we are.
Who are we?
Yeah, instead of what do we have to do?
Right, what do we have to do versus like, who are we? Yeah, I love it. Uh, Sean?
Uh, also, the data, I'll, I'll base, always for me.
All my nerd friends.
Like, getting the preliminary data, um, and it's like a little teaser.
Oh, so much.
Like, what's to come? Um, but also, the fact that you are thinking about, is this the best way to look at things? I appreciate that, and when you say it, I'm like, oh, yeah. That may not be, but it hadn't occurred to me to think of that, so that works well for me.
Yeah, yeah, cool, yeah, I dig it. Yeah, we should always be, we should always be, there's a great book called Think Again by, um, that guy. And, uh, it's such a great, we just never get stuck thinking the same thing forever. Like, we should always go, is this still how we think? Yeah, pot roast is what it's about. Josh, what do you got?
I'm foreseeing benefits.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we always talked about, you know, having the high school, building middle school, duh, 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 duh. But to see one of our middle school students training to the high school, doing middle school events, going, I mean, there are pictures of the young man, there's nobody near him.
Yeah.
Um, as he's running this race. And I think those are opportunities that we, we shouldn't overlook as we talk about ourselves, because it's stuff like that that really kind of separates us from everybody else. That's how we sprinkle a little Westlake on it.
Yeah.
And it, it's stuff like that that I think is so cool, because I never would have thought of that in a million years.
Well, and those things take on a life of their own. Uh, I mean, that started with one kid, we got one kid kind of doing that. Fast forward five years, who knows what? But e- esports was that way. I mean, Roland Eichley's like, hey, can we play some stuff? And all of a sudden, boom! Like, esports is a big bridge between our middle school and our high school. And it's, you know, Roland Eichley and that, it, it, it started with the small, one, one kid, right? Yeah, I love that.
Yeah, and I just, but I never thought to look there.
Yeah.
Boom, here it is.
Yeah, that's great, love that. Uh, Steve, you want to play?
Yeah, uh, I'll do the data as well, probably not a shocker.
Yeah, right.
Uh, but really not data for the data piece, but for, I think it was the second or third last slide, uh, talking about interventions that are set up.
Yeah, man.
The staff and the structure that are put up around that. Uh, just the activity that's involved, and how that really connects to personalization, uh, and how every student's getting kind of what they need, right? So if you needed a high school or a middle school, or you need the, you know, reading or math division, like, the kids are getting what they need, and just how it all connects together.
Yeah, yeah, there's such, yes, such great work going on in the intervention side. And Roland, you interested in that?
I'm gonna celebrate something that I totally forgot when you first told us. Um, the law came out, oh, well, I should say the right came out, about trying to recoup our ADA attendance.
Oh, yeah.
You guys implemented, I feel like we just talked about it, and it's already implemented.
It's brand new.
I mean, that's phenomenal.
Yeah, well, it, it, it could give a powerful metric for, uh, uh, lever for us to pull, is utilizing that, um, recaptured ADA money to fund intervention. You know, it's so smart, let's go. Let's, let's get more kids, more time with more teachers, yeah, I love that.
To, to, to have it, and then to implement it, and then to be able to roll it out by October, I mean, that's it.
All right, Emily Batten led, uh, led that project, uh, big shot to Batten. Yeah, she's super smart, working hard, doing cool stuff, for sure, for sure. Uh, is there anything else we want to add before we adjourn? I have one thing, I just think, just because we're all in one place, uh, right? So I've got, it turns out, I took, I get an MRI on my knee, I don't know if I gave you the full details, but I, how about?
Do you want that on the tubes?
I don't care. Hi! Well, I just don't want to, I don't want to speak outside of the meeting, because we're in the meeting. But, yeah, I, because I might not, I might not, I might miss a meeting coming up. So I've got a torn ACL, a torn meniscus, a fractured tibia, and a fractured femur. Uh, you know, skateboarding, accident there. And, uh, it's gonna be fine, they're gonna put it all back together. But they were like, hey, when you get the surgery on it, you're gonna be out for a few, three weeks. So I don't know exactly when the surgery schedule is, but in the next couple of months, I might disappear for a couple of weeks, and that's, so you might have to have a meeting where, like, Amy Wells is sitting right here.